We're now live.
Good morning. I would like to welcome everyone to today's business of the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee Meeting. My name is councillor Thomas Snuth, I am the chairman of this committee, and to my right is councillor Bailey Robinson, the vice-chairman. Can I remind you that the audiovisual feed for this formal public meeting is being broadcast live via the county council's website, and your comments will remain accessible online? There are no fire drills set for this morning, so in the event of the fire alarm sounding, can you please leave the chamber through the rear doors, through the reception, and assemble in the front car park? Please have all mobile phones, laptops and iPads on silent, and the hearing loop is now activated. The request to speak will be collected and announced by the vice-chairman. I will try to ensure that everyone has equal opportunity to ask questions and to make contributions. I would appreciate all contributions to be clear, concise, and ask that you indicate early that you wish to speak. We will now start the formal meeting. Item one is apologies for absent and replacement members. Andrew, do we have any apologies?
We just have one set of apologies today from councillor Richard Wright, who's being replaced by councillor Stephen Rowe for this meeting only. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number two is declarations of members' interests. Do members wish to declare any interests? Councillor Rowe.
Yeah, Mr Chairman, I will have to leave for item number five, as I have a pecuniary interest in my family-owned land that the highway's going over.
Thank you. I'd like to declare a personal non-pecuniary interest on item six to the 2026/27 strategic route servicing procurement. As a local division member for South Fling the Coates, I have advocated for one of these schemes proposed in the report, specifically the A1031 North Coast scheme. Following advice sought from legal and democratic services, I will participate in the discussion, but will abstain from the final vote and request that my abstention be recorded in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can the minutes please note the item five and item six for the councillors? Thank you. Moving on to item number three, the minutes of the meeting held on the 20th of October 2025. This item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a record, correct record, on pages five to sixteen of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposer? Councillor King and a seconder, please. And councillor Sheard. Can we take a vote? All those in favour, please raise your hand. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. The minutes have been agreed as a correct record, and I will sign them at the end of the meeting. Item number four, announcements of the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. I have just one announcement, and that is in relation to our next meeting, which is next week on the 15th of December. Just to notify members that the minutes which will be produced from this meeting today will be reviewed alongside the minutes of next week's meeting, and they will be voted on on the 26th of January 2026. And these conclude my announcements. Move on to executive councillors. Do you have any announcements? Councillor Sheed.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to update the committee after a presentation I received recently from one of our highways partners, WSP. They've carried out an assessment of how we manage our road networks, letting us understand how we're performing and some areas of works that we can improve on our road network. Encouragingly, their assessment has shown that Lincolnshire County Council is one of the leading highways authorities in England, in terms of how we manage our networks and our performance. They've particularly highlighted our outstanding performance metrics, including that we completed 100% of inspections, that 99% of our works are delivered on time, and less than 1% of our works have to be abandoned. They also highlighted our use of technology, both through the works our Lynx Labs does, and in testing the network's conditions and using data to prioritise work, but how technology lets us raise and repair issues more quickly and try new approaches. Overall, the assessment gives us a score of four out of five, meaning of course that there are always more ways we can do to improve things. But when the report highlights service improvements as one of our strongest areas, I know we're on the right road, as it were. Well, I know for myself and most of my fellow councillors, highways issues are one of the most common things residents speak to us about. It was felt important to share this with you and recognise that our performance is above many of the other councils around the country. I hope the committee finds this news encouraging, as I do. And as always, I would urge people to report any issues on roads to us through Fix My Street, and we will fix them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any announcements by the senior officers?
No, Chairman.
Then we'll move over then to item number five, North Hycam Relief Road proceed to construction. This is a pre-decision scrutiny report, can be found on pages seventeen to thirty-eight of the agenda pack. This report seeks approval for the report on the proceed-to-construction phase of the North Hycam Relief Road. This decision is due to be considered by the executive on the 6th of January 2026. The views of the scrutiny committee will be reported to the executive as part of the consideration of the item. It is asked that the committee consider the report presented and determines whether the committee supports the recommendations to the executive as set out on pages twenty of the report, and that the committee agrees any additional comments to be passed on to the executive in relation to this item. The report was presented by Sam Edwards, Head of Highways Infrastructure and Labour Service Services. Over to you, Sam.
Thank you, and good morning all. So this is a further key decision paper, a pre-decision paper, and I'm happy to say hopefully the final paper for this scheme before we start works next year or early next year, subject to a couple of processes to still go through. So I'll treat the paper as read, but I'll pick out some sort of pertinent parts. So the paper generally gives an update on progress over the last few months, and it also goes into, as I say, the next decision to make, which is to let the contract. So as far as updates, in the last paper back in August, we talked about the orders waiting for them to be confirmed, so the legal CPO and sidewalks orders. Those have now been confirmed, which is brilliant news, and they've started the process, so that secures the land in order to deliver the scheme. At the end of September, this then, by having the orders confirmed, allowed us to submit the final business case to the DFT. That is the process that secures the totality of the money, the £110 million from the DFT. It's worth keeping in mind, we've already drawn down approximately £20 million of that money to get to this stage already. I sat in the investment committee, so that's a DFT civil servant process, sat in the investment committee and presented the scheme for scrutiny. That was in November, and there was a unanimous recommendation to approve, and that's sat with ministers now. That decision could come before Christmas, it's more likely to come in January, but there's no defined date of when that'll happen. As far as updates, we've also been doing advanced works on site, so we've been, for those that may be driving across the A67 Grantham Road, you may have seen some works, that's the advanced archaeology works. There are five locations across, four of them are already complete and backfilled. There's a fifth that were about 70, 80% complete already. So that is due to finish in January, February next year, well in advance of when we start the works. In addition, those around the South Hycam area may have seen an oil pipeline diversion taking place. That started in the late summer. They just did the pressure testing last week, which all passed, which is good, so they're now in the process of backfilling those elements. So that should be completed in January next year to allow, again, allow the works to take place. This paper, as far as information, has tried to focus a little bit more on the construction activities, the upcoming in the new year, and give a high-level view of how we'll construct over the three years, and again, a high-level view of the traffic management. I don't propose to go into each individual element of that. What I will highlight is that, subject to the executive approving, if they wish to, on the 6th of January, we are setting up some meet-the-contractor events, similar to the engagement events that we've done over the last three or four years. That will allow the public to come and meet the contractors, go through the more detailed traffic management plans, the what we're building it, how we're building it, meet the team, and potentially we're looking to have some of the archaeological finds that we've uncovered at those events as well. What I will highlight in the report is that the cost on, that we put in a target cost in August has remained unchanged. So that remains, and that's the target cost that we're moving forward to sign, and that was what also went in the final business case. So to summarise, the delegation, well, we're looking for a decision to let the final element of the contract to Balfour Beatty to start, and within that also to delegate that approval to the executive director for place and the portfolio for highways and transport. The reason we need the delegation is because we don't want to let the contract until the final business case is through. So once the final business case comes through, and hopefully it does, we can then let the contract. So I'll pause there, Chairman, and ask for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. Councillor Robinson, do we have any speakers?
Yep, councillor Reeve.
I'm just looking for clarification where we stand with the Bat Bridge. I'd like a little comment on that, and then something I'd like to ask following that, if that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So we've been working quite a bit since the executive on those elements. What I will say is that the leader has written to the Prime Minister and is expecting a response from that, but leaving a little bit more time until we get that response. We've had a number of conversations with Natural England. We're looking at various options from building the infrastructure to not building it. So there's various degrees, but no decision's been made on that yet, hence waiting for the Prime Minister hopefully to feedback on this. We are expecting a resolution before the end of the year, but I want to be absolutely clear that this decision that allows us to place the order with the contractor doesn't preclude the ability to amend or remove the bridge in its entirety later in the process. So by making a decision on this today doesn't mean that it will or won't be built, that's running in tandem with it.
Thank you. Has anybody actually raised the issue of, this bridge I understand is to be planted with a hedgerow so that bats can navigate using their sensors? Has anybody worked out how these bats managed to navigate before the Enclosure Act of 1773, when all common land had hedgerows and things planted, and prior to that it was mostly open countryside? So I just wondered if anybody's managed to work out how the bats navigated before then, and why they wouldn't be able to navigate in a similar manner if the bridge wasn't there?
So I'm not aware of the acting details, I can't make comment on that. What I can say is we've engaged with national experts who provide mitigation for elements of this nature, and they have advised strongly that this is the appropriate mitigation for the impact of this scheme.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Clark.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam, for your report. I welcome the item. Any improvements to Lincoln Transport issues is a improvement and will be welcomed by the residents. Could you tell me, the cost of it, is it a fixed cost or is it an open chequebook for the contractors? Thank you.
It's neither. So there is very, in this type of works of this scale, fixed-price contracts don't really exist, because something will always change, because you're not in control. So you're always better to accept that and therefore build in elements within the contract to be able to manage that change, to put the risk and the liability where it's best placed to manage that. And that's what this form of contract does, which is a very common form, which is NEC4 Option C, which is a target cost with activity schedule. So it's got a share percentage of paying gain. I can take that offline, because it's quite complex, if that's helpful to talk about later. But it's a most common practice of contracts of this nature, so that each party is incentivised to reduce inefficiencies and also to find efficiencies, because both parties either gain from it or they lose from it. However, the route that we've gone through as a design and build significantly reduces our risk of design issues. So looking at other schemes in the past where they're sort of designed, bid and build, so we'll go and procure a designer, and then we'll ask a contractor to go build it. If there's a problem with the design, the contractor will, we are accountable for that, what we do with that. What we've done instead of this is we've procured Balfour Beatty, and they've procured the designer. So if there's any issues between the designer and contractor, that's nothing to do with Lincolnshire. That's their risk to take in that process. And this was the exact strategy that we formed sort of four years ago, four, five years ago, when we entered into this. So we didn't have sort of repeat issues that we've had at things like the Lincoln Eastern Bypass, where you get stuck between the designer and the contractor, is actually leave those parties. So it's not a fixed contract, but it's certainly, and I must stress this, this is not an open book cheque either. There are risk mitigations and liabilities set in place about who owns that throughout the delivery of the scheme.
Thank you. Councillor Grantson.
Yeah, thanks, Sam, for the thought. It was actually a very good one. Just two questions of mine. On page twenty-six, obviously we've got the high economic, that brings in high-value money, and I was just wondering, once it's all said and done over the three, five-year period, how much revenue would that generate?
So I didn't quite follow that. Revenue?
Yeah, obviously with the infrastructure going into place round the North Hycam Relief Road, how much of the economic impact will that have? Sorry?
Okay, so the scheme, the way the business case develops is you measure it over a 60-year period from completion. And that's where in the paper it talks about the benefit-to-cost ratio, which I'd have to get the numbers, but we're broadly around the four, the sort of three and a half to four, depending on which metrics you use. So that means of the, let's call it circa £200 million we're spending. Over those 60 years, we will get £800 million worth of benefits back. But that must not be confused in cash. That is not tangible cash. That is investment into the growth, the GDP, the development, all the kind of wider, the travel times, congestion reducing, carbon reducing. It's a myriad of things, accident reduction as well. So there's no revenue feed that comes back into this in a direct tangible, but as the economy, we're talking about sort of £800 million over the next 60 years.
Yeah, and last question is on page twenty-six. Obviously, the scheme remains at £207 million, and the balance includes an additional £14 million, reflecting the changes acquired from the original scope of the scheme. What kind of changes to that scheme, and what warrants that £14 million in those changes?
Okay, so that was detailed in the last report, in the August report, so I'll have to go back to my memory. But for example, the mitigation to the structures that weren't included, the Anglian Waters costs increased by about £3.5 to £4 million. There was also some elements about discharging of flood conditions and the Environment Agency and the IDB policies changing over that period of time. There was also change in law around national insurance, which increased at the point of contact of going through. I'd have to go back and look at the previous reports to define them all, but they were all contained in that report.
Thank you. I've just got a few questions. I'll take them one at a time, so. On page thirty-one, the report refers to the concurrent works taking place across multiple geographic sections. To what extent do you see these concurrent works worsening traffic in areas that already see significant congestion, and what will be done to mitigate the impacts? Thank you.
Okay, so I'll invent a question for myself there. So in the first part, just to be clear, the reason why we do all the activities concurrently across it, because there's a view, which I understand is why don't we start at one end and go to the other? But there's massive levels of inefficiency in doing that. You want to, I don't know, it's like making a cake, you deliver it in layers, you don't deliver it in slices. So you do all your earthworks first, then you do all your drainage, so you're not having repeat coming back and forth. The other really, really key thing on this scheme, which is very similar to the Lincoln Eastern Bypass, is the way I would simply define it is this is a great big earthwork job with a road on top. So there's a massive amount of work about moving the soil or the ground from the edge going up to Waddington over to South Hycam and filling it so that you get a cup-fill balance. So there's almost two years' worth of work doing that, as well as the other parts as we're going through. As far as traffic, what I would encourage, I don't have the exact answers on all the traffic management arrangements, but the elements I've seen, particularly around the panel's roundabout, is all those works that are affecting it will be at night, although we will have lane closures on during the day, and national highways, we're generally happy with what we're proposing. It will be a similar event, because if you look at the plans, where the roundabouts, most of them are actually offline, they're to the side of the road, so we can build the roundabout offline, move the traffic on to the roundabout, and then so we're minimising the disruption. You'll have two or three weeks while we're doing crossovers and things like that. But I'd really encourage you to come along to the meet-the-contract events, because we can get all the TM plans and show through that. But in principle, the impact should be relatively minor, as I think most would agree. It was, for the scale of what we were building, was the same when we built the Lincoln Eastern Bypass too.
Brilliant. Thank you for that reassurance. Just, the report also denotes a £10 million contribution in developer contributions. Could these be subject to change, for example, regarding inflation?
Yeah, so the £10 million that we've put in was a, the county council is forward funding that £10 million of section 106. It is very difficult to define what that is, because we don't control the housing market, we don't control when it happens, when it's delivered. So the £10 million is an estimate based on the rates that was contained in the central Lincolnshire local plan, the build-out period. If that development was built out sooner, then that number would drop, because the value and the inflation that takes place would drop that. If, for example, it was delivered on a longer programme than what the local plan defines, then that number would grow. So it's very, very difficult to define that, but I think what is really important to understand this is that the county council is forward funding this. So this scheme is not predicated, it does not, the delivery is not impacted as to when that funding comes in, albeit that it is factored in a long-term basis that it does so.
Thank you very much, and just last question. Should stage two of the project be delayed beyond February 26? Could the target price expire or require updating?
Yes, as simple as that. It's not necessarily the start date that causes the issue, it moves the programme out, so you have a small level of inflation on that. But the more critical element is, at the moment, we're due to start sort of early activities late Feb and going into March time. The earthwork season I talked about is over two years, so you do that next year and the year after. So you only span one winter period, which is the risky time for doing earthworks. If that shifts out, then your two years goes into sort of half a year, a year and half a year. So you span two winters, which increases the risk profile, which, because the contractor owns that risk, they will understandably want to review where they're at within that programme and reprice it. So it's absolutely critical that this starts, to maintain what's in that report, that it starts as presented. And to stress, there's only two items which is stopping us from starting, is one is this key decision, and the other one is the final business case approval, which we hope in January.
And that's from government to get the actual funding for the?
That's correct, yeah. Waiting for, hopefully ministers to give a, hopefully, positive result.
So I just need to make sure we're pressuring ministers to see if we can get this as soon as possible, so then we can get started. And that's what we need to do at the council.
Yes, it's very much in the political domain now. The civil servants and the officers have done what they need to do within the business case, it's now for a decision-making. Just as this is now in this decision-making forum, the FBC is now in the national decision-making forum with the ministers.
Brilliant, thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Sheard.
Thank you. Just coming back to the £10 million that's going to be pre-funded by Lincolnshire County Council, what safeguards do we actually have in place to ensure that if we do receive a lesser amount, this isn't going to have implications on future services? How's that going to affect us? We're pre-funding it, but what safeguards do we have in place? What's the minimum amount that they can give us back?
So the council addresses these sort of things in a, I guess, a worst-case scenario. So we don't budget on other services requiring this money back into the county. So if this, you know, and it won't, but if this ends up at zero, no other services need to be cut. If the money comes back in, then the council can make different decisions about additional services that it can choose to do over that period of time. But essentially, it will come through the budget-setting process that comes to full council full review. But no, there's nothing else that is subject to the definitive of that money coming back into impacting.
May I just come back? Just to absolutely reassure, this isn't actually going to impact the taxpayers' pocket in any way, shape or form. We've got safeguards in place to ensure that.
So the funding for the scheme is that the £110 million will come from the DFT, and the circa £97 million will come from LCC. That is what you, as a separate process in the budget setting, you are being asked in this new setting to review, and that's where the £14 million increase comes in. That's it. That's £207 million to £207 million of cost. Should the 106 come in the future over a phased period, that is additional income back into the county to offset the costs it's spent to date, to then potentially use elsewhere or to cover the debts that it took in borrowing the £97 million in the first place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speakers? Councillor Vernon.
Thank you, Chairman, and I'd like to start by saying thank you, because I recognise it's been an extremely long road to get to this point, if you'll pardon the pun. But it does look like we're finally sort of getting to the point where, yeah, this is it. I have obviously sort of read the report, and I just wanted to say that I do think the design and build method is a strong way of doing it, and it ensures that there's total accountability from the contractors to do that. The other point I just wanted to make, and I'm conscious you said to councillor Clark that you may want to take this online. Could you give a little bit more detail on Option C, if possible, please? Thank you.
Sure. I wasn't expecting this one, but I love it. So we're getting to some contact talks. Right, so how an Option C works is you, and let me finish, you pay actual costs. So you pay the contractor what they've incurred. It sounds very unfair and very unreasonable, and how do you control that? At the same time, when we talk about this target cost thing, that's effectively agreeing an estimate. The price of the works will be whatever they were, whatever they'll be by the end of it, but we control the target cost. So if there's a change on site, we say we want to take a bridge out, then you would expect the target cost to reduce. Or actually, we want to build another roundabout for whatever reason, the target cost will increase. At the end of the job, you take, let's say the whole scheme costs £200 million, and your target cost was £210 million. What you do is you pay the contractor the difference between that, so you pay them £205 million, so they get a gain of £5 million. But we thought we were going to have to pay £210, and we only paid £205, so we're £5 million better off. The other way around, which is critical, is say the job costs £200 million and the target cost was £190 million, we only pay £195 million. We get £5 million worth of free works effectively. And what's more important is that the percentage, the percentage difference from the target cost is capped at, I think it's 10%. So between 0 and 5% either side, you split it 50/50. Everything beyond that, so let's say you were £100 million, sorry, £200 million of actual costs, and the target cost was £100 million. We wouldn't pay them 75, we pay them, sorry, we pay them from £100 million up to £110. Everything above that is their problem, that's their risk. Equally, if you're in massive gain, they've been inflating the target cost as high as they can, we only pay half of the 10%. Everything above that comes back to the client. So you are, although you're sharing the paying gain, there's limitations beyond that, which becomes 100% client gain or 100% contractor pain. And that's why forming the target cost is really, really important. And the best way to look at it is the contractor controls the price of work done to date, the actual cost, because they're the one building it. The project manager controls the target cost. So I can get into a lot more detail, but that's kind of a principle of how it works.
Fabulous, thank you. That's really helpful and clarifies exactly the point. So in effect, there is a limit to our liability in terms of the additional costs that they may incur, but actually if they come in under, we also gain as well. So yeah, brilliant. Thank you very much. Thank you for clarification.
Just to add to that, yes, that's absolutely right, but if, for example, there is legitimate change for whatever reason, then both the works and the target cost will move up, and then that's when you start paying more, because there's more things you have to do or something was omitted. But that's where it's really important, and the fact that this is design and build, because if they decide, oh, we've got, we had to build a bridge, or we forgot about that roundabout, not our problem. The cost of the works will increase, because you've still got to physically build something, but that target cost won't, because that's not our risk, that's yours. So the cost comes up, but we don't pay any more because you're capped.
So just to come back finally, basically the design and build is a real safeguard for you as an authority in terms of managing cost?
I think it's the, well, the proof will be in the pudding in three years' time, but to this date, I think it's a far better procurement route for schemes of this scale and nature. It is, I don't believe it's appropriate for, you know, some of the roundabout schemes we do or some of that, because you do pay for this type of package, but you get much greater cost certainty.
Thank you. Any further speakers? That's it, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank councillor Sheard for her clarification question on the £10 million, that's very important. And councillor Vernon, I've never seen Sam get so excited, so thank you. And moving on, therefore I would like to move that the committee supports the recommendations to the executive as detailed on pages twenty of the report, namely that they approve and proceed to the North Hycam Relief Road proceed-to-construction report, and I ask that our comments and suggestions for elements to be considered ahead of the decision being taken, as these have been captured by the scrutiny officer, be shared with the executive for its consideration. Do we have a seconder, please? Councillor Edgo Soguski. When I take it to the vote, can I please, also those in favour, please raise your hand? When I take that to the vote, can I please, also those in favour, please raise your hand? That's unanimous, thank you very much, that has been agreed. Thank you. Now move over to item number six, which is the 2026-27 strategic route surfacing procurement. This pre-decision scrutiny report can be found on pages 39 to 56 of the agenda pack. This report seeks approval for the procurement of the strategic route surfacing programme of works for 2026-27. This decision is due to be considered by the executive councillor for resources and the executive councillor for highways and transport between the 15th and the 19th of December 2025. The views of the scrutiny committee will be reported to the executive councillors as part of their consideration for this item. It is asked that the committee considers the report presented and determines whether the committee supports the recommendations to the executive councillors as set out on pages 41 of the report, and that the committee agrees that any additional comments be passed to the executive councillors in relation to this item. The report will be presented by Sam Edwards, over to you, Sam.
Me again, but it's, it's the last report for this one. So this is, I suppose I'll start by saying how we've historically delivered these, these large schemes, and I, I think I'll start by saying these are effectively general maintenance schemes, similar to patching schemes or anything else that we do, which is included in the highways infrastructure asset management plan, and this is in accordance with that regarding the sifting, the types of schemes that we do. The difference is, is that these schemes we tend, we, because of the size, they go over 500,000 and we tender them out competitively to the market, that is the reason why they need a key decision. But I don't want to take away, this comes from the general highways maintenance block and is, and is measured and delivered and sifted in the same way as all other maintenance across, or proactive maintenance across the network. In the past, these decisions have gone straight to an executive sign-off, but this year we started taking them through scrutiny committee prior to the, the, the approval process by the portfolio holder. We wanted, what, what was very clear though is they're effectively exactly the same papers with a different title, a different cost and a different location plan, but they're principally the same, the same thing really. So what we wanted to do is, for efficiency reasons, and actually to give you, as, as the scrutiny committee, a better oversight of the whole programme for next year, rather than sort of piecemeal as, as they come along throughout the year, is, is deliver you a programme of activity of this nature that, that we're looking, and that's affected what this programme goes into. We've got a number of schemes listed within there, and at the moment we're still setting our internal budget and our disaggregation about what, what, what schemes they will fund. But one of the things I wanted to stress within here is, those schemes are high-level estimates from, at, at this stage, nobody's working on real high-level detailed design at this stage, but they're taken from the laboratory work and the investigations that we do in advance, and taken a typical scheme and, and square meterage and rates and things like that to give us an indication of the cost. So therefore, when we get into details then, those costs will differ, some will increase, some will decrease, some will grow, some will shrink, some of them will have, will need to do some footway works while we're there, or some drainage works and things like that. So what we've included in this paper is the ability to flex as we do now. So for example, if we end up doing a lot more works than we planned, then what we would do is move one or two of those schemes into the following financial year, because effectively, as I say, this is general maintenance and it's almost a sausage machine that you can continually go through. Equally, if, if we end up thinking, getting there and going, actually that doesn't need quite doing as much, or the risk hasn't come to fruition, we can pull schemes forward for the following year and into this year. So this is an indication of the schemes that, that we're looking to do. But within these, we've also putting a delegation that I can't just go on my merry way and whatever they are sign off, we still go back and, and we, and we review these with the portfolio holders to sign off on the individual. But we wanted to be transparent with the scrutiny committee, A, as I say, to get better efficiency in, rather than coming with lots and lots of, of the same paper, and also so you see the whole, the whole scheme and the whole suite of it. The final thing I just wanted to pick up is that on the individual schemes, we have a team, various teams that work on those, and just as we do with all the other schemes, once they get into details and get into planned delivery, the teams will get in contact with the, with the local members and talk through the details that, and how the traffic management work, all the things that we've just discussed, you know, the, the on, on the ground stuff. So we'll continue to commit to that, there's absolutely no delivery, change in the delivery of what we do, but it's just trying to streamline the process. So at that point, I'd pause and welcome any questions or comments, please.
councillor Reeve.
Thank you. On page 45, section 1.4, it says, "The defects identified at these locations include extensive material failures within surfacing." I just wondered how, if we have any details of when that was done previously, what the design life standard was, because I was reading with quite interest about the difference between SMA and HRA for the surfacing material, and was it short-sightedness that the wrong material was used at that time, that's why it's failed, and is that a little bit of an indicator to us that we need to make sure we use the better of the products to achieve that 20-year lifespan? Thank you.
So yeah, so on this hierarchy of roads, because we are talking our big roads, our big strategic roads, we pretty much, without exceptions, use hot-wired asphalt, which is a far more robust surfacing, or the final surfacing, because it takes a lot more pounding, you get a lot more screwing from HTVs as they're going around junctions and things like that. So as I say, we pretty much use the top quality product, if that's what we, the term we, we want to use. As far as the defects, they can come from a myriad of things, sometimes we have to, that you, a lot of these are done at night, on the A16 for example, on A15 because of the nature of the traffic, and you can get a little bit more rain than you wanted, or the temperatures can drop, or there can be an issue with the plant and the way they've delivered it, and so you get defects, and sometimes you get failures or bonding failures or issues. What we're saying is, those issues are owned by the contractor. Yes, we have to go back in, or they have to go back in if they don't pick it up while they're on-site at the same time, which happens 90% of the time, but those are not a cost to the county council, those are a cost to the contractor and are priced in, into it.
Thank you. councillor Clark.
Thank you. Some are a bit confused. Page 45, it says there's a list of the work to be undertaken. Bit further up, it says 1.3 represents some of the highest-scoring sites. Are these sites the highest-scoring, or have they just been selected, you know, across the county?
So these are the same sifting we use on, 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 on any scheme. What it means a sum of is, I can't say these are the absolute top, but let's say they're the top 20 or whatever, and there'll be a reason why we might not be, we will be delivering the other ones, but there can be, for example, getting road space ability, there may be other developments happening in the same place, there may be other works you can't get in that year, you plan it for the following year, or you could be outside schools and you need to do it in the summer holidays. So these are still the top ones, but on our grading, let's say it's 1 to 100, you'll have 30 that were 98 or 97, so there's, there's not, there's not quite as, if, if you think the scale of the number of roads and the schemes that we will have, the difference between them is very, very, very minor, but we pick the ones that we can deliver in the year, but we're still getting around always to the top, to the top priority list.
Outside this meeting, could you let me know where Newark Road from St Caffirines to Brant Road comes in the scaling? Thank you.
Yes, yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much. councillor Granton.
Yeah, thanks, Sam. I'm really glad that, one of my recommendations from a couple of meetings ago about the full re-depth reconstruction project going down to 360mm, could I have some reassurance that will be in future reference on the worst roads, looking into the depth of those roads for future references, because I think that's what's leading to some of these roads being in bad condition?
Yeah, so the depth is very much defined, so we, we, we define everything by, by the 20-year design life of these, these schemes, and it really depends on the depth you need to go with your surfacing and your, and your sub-base underneath. So the best way to think of a road is the, the bound stuff, the tarmac stuff is for, is for defending against vehicles, your unbound stuff is for, is for defending against poor ground conditions. So you've got two forms within the road, one's protecting that, the other one's protecting that. So to define what depth you go and how, and what you do with the foundation depends on your million standard axle, so your, your, your loading, your number of vehicles, the types of vehicles, things like that, and also your ground conditions, if you're in the fens will be very different than if you're put caister, for example, and they would, they would vary. So I can't say that this scheme we want really good, so it needs to be 360mm, whereas that one only needs to be 180, because you might have schemes that are really, really, you know, really badly damaged, but they only need 150mm because the foundation's really good, because you're on bedrock. Whereas you could, in the fens, have a scheme that, well, it's not too bad, but you end up having to go 400 metres deep because the ground conditions are so poor. So it's really about what is causing the, the defect and why you're needing to go in, which is why the, the design process feeds it into this with, as councillor Chee mentioned earlier, about the lab input and the investigations that go through.
Thank you for that, Sam. And obviously on page 45, we've got the A153 at Amwick. I think that needs widening, if we're going to be honest with you, especially with Moye Park being there with the lorries. I'm, I've seen a few near misses since I'm a lorry driver myself, any chance of wider than that slightly, so we don't have any serious collisions in the future?
I couldn't commit here, I don't know about the detail of that specific scheme, but I can certainly speak to the guys to see if we've got any historical issues, accident data, whether any sort of, sort of going over on the rutting on the other side, so we can look at those details and whether that would be appropriate or not.
Thank you. councillor Sheard.
Thank you. Sam, mine isn't a question, mine's just to say thank you very much for all of the information and all of the knowledge, for me going forward, talking to people about highways and, and conditions and issues they have, this will be really helpful, so thank you for all the information, and I look forward to receiving more in the future.
Thank you. Just a few questions from me, just regarding, so obviously what one of my roads are in this scheme, but I just want to ask questions based on all of them. Obviously you said about the fact that every member will be consulted on the science behind those roads and how they're going to be restructured, I've heard that from my highways officer about the layering and the sort of how we're going to make sure that it's a long-term solution for this, so that's great, and it'll be great that other members that have these, these schemes in their area will get the same, and that's, that was one of my questions answered. Just with the site maps in the report, do these reflect the exact site areas, or are they more approximate plans?
Yeah, so the site maps are purely data-driven at this stage. What will happen as we, as we commission the individual schemes to the, to our internal delivery, is they'll, they'll start to go out to the site, have a look and then go, ooh, yes, okay, that's bad, but actually, there's 10 metres worth of that, that's pretty terrible, we'll bring that in as well, or that curb's broken, or that footway, or that, or that gully or drainage. So it's not a case of just going in, doing our bit of surfacing and going out, it's about looking at the whole site in, in, in its totality. What I will say is on some of these roads, you look at it and it's like, well, where do you stop? And you do have to draw a line and then potentially do the next section next year, because the budget will only go so far, and it would be two reasons, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the right thing to invest a whole year's programme on one road when the whole county has issues. In addition, actually, you'd end up closing that road for the whole year, which causes its own issues, and getting road space for other things that are taking place, so we tend to move these around. And the best example is, we did the A17 over a three-year period a few years ago, we did different sections as we're going along, because having that level of traffic congestion consistently throughout it would cause great, greater issues. So, so yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you for that reassurance, but yeah, just for now, that it won't be, it's not precise about what the, the current plan is right now, it's just an estimate, which will just assure not only my residents, but residents of each area, if they're not, there, there's a bit where they think a bit, a bit down the road's a bit worse, then at least then we can know that there's a bit of flexibility there, and just to reassure our residents in all of our areas, thank you very much. councillor Vernon.
Thank you very much indeed, and thank you, Sam, for the overview of those projects. I note that if the costs increase, some projects may be deferred, and I wondered if we can have an assurance that they would take place within the next financial year available. I'm conscious with your comments to councillor Clark about the prioritisation, that there may actually be others that are higher up the prioritisation list, but these have obviously come in, so by committing to these being in 26-27, if there is any delay, will those still be at the top of the list for priority in 27-28? I'll have a couple others as well, but I'll stick with that one first.
So it's always a difficult thing to set a line, that's what it is, because I think one of the things you're getting at is, let's say we delay it a year, well, in that year's period, another road might get worse, and what do you do? But at some point, you've got to say, this is your delivery programme. So if it shifts to the following year, that becomes a priority for that year, because actually there's been a lot of officer time spent on doing detailed design investigation and things like that. If you then leave it two years, that road could be in a, let's face it, a worse state, and you have to go back and revise it, because it could be more damage and have to do different things. So we will tend to, if it does shift, that becomes, I mean, we're, we're saying we might deliver it in March, we now deliver it in June. You know, when, when we say the next financial year, we're saying push it back a month or two, gen, generally. So yes, that, that, we don't sort of throw it off the list and do another shift and see what's at the top, that becomes the priority for the, for the following year.
Thank you, and I'm presuming that some of these schemes will take place at the same time, because given the locations where they are, there's no reason for them to be carried out individually?
Yeah, so a really good example is if we were doing a, a scheme specifically during the summer holidays, take Newland for example, that we did, or Carmarthen Road that we did, did this year, we would do that under during the school holiday because of where it is. If that was, if there, if there had been an issue with that, we wouldn't have just put it back three months, we'd have put it back a year to target that time. Same thing with if you're outside schools for school holidays, we will target the period when we want to do it.
And if I may continue, chairman, just two other points as well. I note the plans to schedule around key events, and I think that's absolutely vital. I'd also ask that, as you've mentioned previously, every councillor will be kept up to date with what's going on. It's the minor things that make the big difference, I mean, for example, we all know about Burley Horse Trials in Stamford, that's sort of a well-known event, but we have the Offington Scarecrow Festival, which is also equally well-known event around there, and so sort of consideration needs to be taken for those less major events, but actually very important parish events that take place when work is scheduled. And then just my final point, I do think that what you're proposing is absolutely the correct solution, these schemes are going to cause some inconvenience, which I know we will seek to minimise in any way that we can. The savings that you look to be able to achieve through other methods are very modest, and I believe that residents would prefer the solution of having it done once, so yeah, and thank you for your time on this.
And just as I may on, on the events, just to, just to be clear on that one, so yeah, the, the local teams will, will speak, but we also engage, just left actually, with the, with the network teams as well that deal with these events, so that we know them in advance when we're booking road space and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you. councillor Reeve.
Thank you. I noticed you're using pre-qualified contractors to tender for bids for these projects, and wondering what sort of a competitive market it is, I'm wondering how many pre-qualified contractors we have that would be putting a bid in, do we have a good range of contractors, or do we find ourselves sort of with Hobson's Choice? And also, will they be bidding for all these projects, or will each project be bid for individually, will we find ourselves with one contract doing one and one doing another? Thank you.
So yeah, so we go to a framework of contractors, there are five competitors on there, they're highly competitive with each other. We're just in the process, in fact, the announcement was last week, the letters went out last week of the new framework, because they only last for four, for four years, so I can't actually remember the new ones unfortunately, I know the existing ones, but they're broadly the same, the same surfacing contractors. But yes, I can confirm they are highly competitive amongst, amongst each other, and that's what, that's why we've maintained this tendering process for as long as I've worked here, so over 20 years, because we, we guarantee that this, and we have tried other methods, and this always gives us the, the best guarantee of, of value for money.
Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Granton.
Thanks, just, yeah, I'm just going to touch a bit more on councillor Reeve regarding these contracts. Obviously, we've seen some reports lately in the media that we go out, we do a few reconstruction and all, some of them are cracking or, or sinking within six months. So what guarantees are we placing in those contracts, so it don't cost any additional money to the taxpayer?
Yep, just before I come onto that as well, as I didn't answer one of your, your questions, councillor Reeve, about individual contracts, we don't tender them out as one contract, all this programme works, there are individual tenders for each individual scheme. So rather than putting all your whole lot in with one, you're actually keeping it really fluid throughout the year and competitive. So rather than putting all your whole lot in with one, you're actually keeping it really fluid throughout the year and competitive. Moving on to your, to your, to your question, it really depends on what the defect is that has occurred. Is it a defect? Is it a design flaw? Is it something that's within those remits? And you start to get into the details of what the contract allows. So for example, if you can, if we can show that it's poor workmanship, hence why the lab that comes on, we also goes out and does, does post-workst testing, taking cores, they'll take samples of the time map before it's going down. If there's any defects sort of captured within those, that's a defect, that's the contractor's responsibility, put it, put it right. If, for example, like we're dealing with right, right now, over this sort of latter end of the summer with the drought damage. If the contractor had gone and done a scheme then you got drought damage, that's not their risk, it's not their defect, they've done nothing wrong. They've, they've built what we asked them to build, but other climatic conditions have caused the issue. So it's really, I would say ninety percent of it, if there's an issue, is paid for by the contractor. But there are certain times when actually it's not their fault, it's one of those things to, to coin a phrase.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No, that's it, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Just one for me. Councillor Vernon did kind of take nearly my question. On the schemes and the local members that are given the details on it, if there is a major change or, and timescale of the project and they are told about it and therefore they come forward with additional works that can be done at the same time, would that be subject to a call in by the local member?
We wouldn't go for a decision until we're, until we've got a tender cost back. So there'd be no call, there's a call into this decision, but the, the, the delegated decision beyond that would go through the normal process that it is. But we would only be going through that when we're definitive that we are delivering these works and we've got a tender cost back.
Perfect. Thank you very much. In that case, if there's no further questions, thank you very much. I therefore, I move that the committee supports the recommendations to the executive councillor for resources and the executive councillor for highways and transport, as detailed on page forty one of the report. And I ask that our comments, as these have been captured by the scrutiny officer, be shared with the executive councillors for their consideration. I have moved it. Could I ask for a second please? Councillor King? We'll take that to a vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Sorry. Against and one abstention. Wonderful. Sorry, Bailey. We now move over to item number seven, which is the revision of the definitive maps modification order prioritisation policy. This pre-decision scrutiny report can be found on pages fifty seven to one oh two of the agenda pack. This report seeks approval for the revision of the DMMO prioritisation policy. This decision is due to be considered by the executive councillor for highways and transport between the tenth and the nineteenth of December, twenty twenty five. The views of the scrutiny committee will be reported to the executive councillor as part of their consideration of this item. It is asked that the committee considers the report presented and determines whether the committee supports the recommendations to the executive councillors as set out on page fifty nine of the report and that the committee agrees to any additional comments to the, to be passed on to the executive councillor in relation to this item. The reports, report will be presented by Andrew Fletcher, Public Rights of Way and Access Manager, and Chris Miller, Head of the Environment. Over to you, Andrew and Chris.
Thank you very much, Chair. I will leave the report as read, but I just want to make a few points. The, what we call the DMMO or the definitive map modification order process. That is predominantly where people are alleging that a right of way exists and is asking the council to recognise it. The council has a duty to receive these applications and determine whether or not to make an order to recognise the path within a reasonable amount of time. And recently, as you'll see in the report, over the last four years, there's been a unprecedented surge in applications that's been received. And it's meant that we've needed to review how we look at these and which ones we look at first. The existing policy prioritises it mainly on data receipt, but the applicant is able to appeal to the definitive map subcommittee in order to review and, and ask that it's reprioritised based on various categories. We're currently at a, a current caseload of five hundred and eighty-three cases, which is in around, takes about thirty years to resolve with the current resources. The problem with this way of doing it is that it doesn't allow us to prioritise cases based on public need. And it doesn't allow us to prioritise cases based on the negative impact that it has on a property, for example, in particular residential properties. When an application is made, it goes on to a statutory register, which is one of the standard questions when someone is selling their house, is that, is there any rights of way claims over the property? If there is a claim, it could negatively impact either the house's value or the ability to sell the property. So it can hang like a sword of Damocles over that property for, for quite some time. What we're proposing is a different way of organising this, using a weighted scoring system. And this would take into a number of, take into a case, number of factors such as public safety, residential impact, community conflict, threats to routes and a variety of issues. But it's very objective. It is the factor either applies or it doesn't. And when it does apply, points are awarded to that case. So you're able to tot up all of the points and then work out where the case should be in comparison to others. This allows it to be much more transparent and objective and focus on public benefit and residential property impacts, for example. And there would still be a ability to appeal to the definitive map subcommittee where applicants consider that the priority system needs to change or we haven't taken things into account properly. But also where we are, for example, given a directive from the planning inspectorate, it would then be up to the subcommittee to decide where it would sit. I will stop there and invite any questions.
Thank you very much for your introduction. I'd like now, now like to invite any members to meet and ask any questions or comments.
Thank you. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, I think perhaps item number nine, significant threat to route. A lot of Lincolnshire at the moment is under NSIPS for things like solar panel development. And I just wondered, is that covered significantly under threats to root? And is, is that part of the, the planning that NSIPS do give a, a high weight? And so we've got twenty points for that. And is that high enough because NSIPS seem to overwrite anything these days? So is that taken into account within this new hierarchy?
Thank you. Yes, the, that element would allow us where, particularly where there's approved development. So when there was planning, approved planning permission for a route, that would add the twenty percent, twenty points on there. The reason why it's not proposed development is because it would allow quite an easy way to push your case further up the list by having superior planning applications, which weren't going to go anywhere. The NSIPS would be a completely different case, however. They're, because they have their own, by virtue of their development consent order, they're able to add, change, delete and change rights of way in their own right. So we end up treating them separately as part of the, the standard day-to-day engagement we have with the NSIP process. So we would go through when there was a solar farm, we would look at all the existing rights of way. We would look at all the DMMO applications that are made and we would respond and engage with the applicant as to what is the best thing to do with all of those. So it can actually be a way of resolving the applications in a positive way without needing to go through an extensive investigation that would normally have to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Vernon.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your report. That was very, very useful. And having sat as a member of the committee. Ooh, I've spilled my water, sorry. Having sat as a member of the committee last year on one or two occasions, I know that it's much needed. It's completely fair to say that there's a really significant backlog in this area and the increase since twenty twenty of one thousand five hundred and eighty-two percent is absolutely vast. I recognise that could never, ever have been predicted, but can I ask, has that now stopped in terms of? Sorry, I'm just unplugging the laptop. But has that now stopped, the number of applications that are coming through?
We've noticed a slowdown. I couldn't promise that it would ever stop and it depends on the applicant. The particular person who was responsible for the majority of those has slowed down. And I think that's because they've come to the, the end of what can be proved with the evidence that is available.
Lovely. Could I also just ask about the, I think the consistent framework is very much the best approach and I'd support the provision of a division list to members too. We talked about, I can't find this in the report this morning, I read it over the weekend. But I note in the report, there was a, a comment about the possibility of people being able to take it further if they weren't satisfied with the timeframes allowed. Could you tell us a little more about that and how that may impact sort of realistically?
Yes, certainly. So outside of the internal process, which would allow applicants to make an appeal to the definitive map subcommittee. They have applicants who have complied with all the particular rules of the legislation are able to go to the planning inspectorate and ask for a determination, or not determination, a direction to the council in order to make a decision to determine your case. That would exist anyway because that's their, their right. Under this new policy, when we would have a direction from the planning inspectorate, we would then make a report to the definitive map subcommittee so that they can make a decision as to whether or not they agree that it should be pushed higher or not.
May I just come back with one further point? One of the issues that came up, I felt when I was subbing on the DMMO committee was the principle of members with very little knowledge being able to sort of go, okay, well, we'll make that priority number six hundred and twenty-eight and this one can be this and whatnot. So I really do support the idea of having a clear prioritisation scheme. I think sort of when we were in the position where sort of we were asking to do that, it just didn't make any sense because you don't know what's below the ones that you're suggesting that we put up to. So I think this is a really welcome piece of work and I'll look forward to it being implemented. Thank you.
Oh, just a few questions from me. Just regarding, so the increase was since twenty twenty. Why was it, why are we doing this now and not years ago when we, we saw that increase? And what could have been the potential impacts on the workload had the policy been revised sooner?
I, I joined the council in twenty twenty-three, so I can't comment particularly too much prior to that. However, in, in terms of where we were looking at it, for a lot of reasons, there was an element where there were so much applications coming through and required processing and dealing with it, that it was actually absorbing everyone's time just dealing with that before being able to take a big picture view and look at the policy and how we were actually managing it. So that's the only thing I can answer on that one.
And having been Andrew's predecessor in the time period you were mentioning, and, and having written the previous policy for it. Really it's because at that point in time, we weren't aware of just how big a scale this would become and how many applications we were getting. Initially it started off in a relatively slow fashion until the, you know, this individual really got to grips with what he was doing and then he was far at all cylinders. So it was really a case of we had to wait and see as to how it was panning out, as whether or not we needed a change to a policy. There was obviously a slight hiatus when I left the role and before Andrew started. And obviously Andrew's got to get his feet under the table before he could start amending policies too greatly and understand what the, what the position was. But we now think that because of the, the work that Andrew's put into, to looking at a, a scoring system, which will help us out, as councillor Vernon says, this, this gives us a different way of, an opportunity of prioritising those cases. So we make sure we're making the right decisions for the authority and the, and the residents and the visitors to it.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted a bit more clarification on some of the definitions of the phrases. So the significant public safety issue and sustained hostility in the community especially. Just to have a bit more clarity on the issues might look in reality.
Thank you. This one is, it's difficult to define on both of them, which one would score and it's, it would have to be on a case-by-case basis. You wouldn't be able to define what is a significant public safety case. The, for public safety in particular, and almost everything could be phrased in a way that would mean public safety. So this one would need to have some sort of demonstrable public safety element that was very clear in order to score the points rather than just being a, a, a general point. And similarly for sustained hostility, we can't define precisely what it would count. As it would be on, very much on the case, but it could be summarised as something like would usually would or should involve the police. So something that would, that would element. By their very nature, these applications are adversarial and particularly those which involve user evidence because there has been one party that has used the path and one party that owns the land. And one way or the other, one of those parties considers that their rights have been infringed. So it, it's a day-to-day occurrence that they are controversial. But it would, if it was to be sustained hostility, it would really involve aggressive actions by one or other party or both. Thank you.
Just, just to give an example on the first one, the significant public safety issue. So for example, if there was a claimed bridle way that meant that if it was found to be a public bridle way after investigation and that stopped equestrians from having to use a busy section of verge along the A forty-six or another A road, that would be a good one to prioritise because of that, that benefit to the safety angle to it.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Granton.
Thanks, Andrew, for the report and congratulations on your job in twenty twenty-three. You must have been absolutely delighted knowing you've got thirty years' work. Yeah, on the basics, while on the total score, what's the minimum score that they have to achieve for you to even start considering the public rights way and definition map?
The minimum score is zero because we cannot refuse to look at them. If they've, if they've been properly made, we can't not unfortunately, we can't just kick them out, kind of sense.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Christopher.
Thank you, Andrew. This is, as, as we spoke, I think, last month. It's some, some of the oldest laws that we've got in the country, I think, that sit behind this and they are a fickle beast, I think is probably the politest way of putting them. So I think noting that this change is very likely to leave some members of the public that this is important to in a situation where there's a likelihood their cases will never end up making it on to that upper list is my understanding from what I'm reading here. But I might have missed that element within the report. But of course, if, if it's done on a priority basis, I suppose is there a level of transparency for situations where, you know, it's, listing them is one thing, but it's a, if that's going to be, oh, well, you're on this list, you're number three hundred and forty-five. Is there an element within there where it's going to say, but that's going to be at the moment estimated at twenty-five years' wait? Or, or any, anything like that that's going to actually give that, the public that transparency and that clarity?
Thank you. We did look at whether we could provide an estimated date, but the, the problem is with what happens in this process and the investigation time, but also it depends on what happens with all other cases and whether or not we get directions and other elements. If we were to give an estimated date, it wouldn't be anything close to reliable. So it might actually cause more problems than it solves because it would either get people's hopes up or completely depress them. But there are elements where people are, people are worried, we can always answer on a standard contact. But there, there still remains the appeal process to the subcommittee and also to pins if they are particularly not happy where they're, where it is at the moment.
Could I just come back briefly, if that's okay? And, and so that makes sense and actually giving people a date and then not meeting it when you're dealing with really long periods like this is a problem. I'm a bit worried that that, that might cause a lot of issues longer term because ultimately what we're saying is that some people might never have, have these cases. And I wonder whether there's an argument to say that we could, could, could we add something into this where we're saying there's a, a long-term view that actually if cases aren't seen within a certain amount of time, that there's a catchnet there? Because I appreciate we don't have the resources at the moment to deal with that. But if we were saying actually if a case gets to twenty years, it, it will then be prioritised or whatever else. And, and then actually that the council will commit to resources in the future for that or planning ahead. So a more proactive approach to how we're going to actually get on top of this work longer term. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I mean, some of the older cases that are on the list are actually ones that have actually been determined previously. So the actual work's been done, it's just the final elements that need to. it's just the final elements that need to be completed. So one of the things in this policy is looking to mop up all of those older ones. The the issue about the age of cases is that the policy is moving towards less of a how old are these cases, but more which ones are the most important to deal with. And it becomes difficult to rat, to sort of verify the two if it's important just simply for its age. So the the backup plan for those is it's still the element where you've got the subcommittee to to appeal, but you've also got planning inspector who, if it's, if a case is over 12 months old, you're able to ask the planning inspector to make a direction. So that's the the trigger point. So effectively, anything over 12 months, they have that appeal process through the planning inspector outside of all our internal processes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you. Since the report was read, has there been any changes in the proposed final date for submissions to the list? Is it going to be open ended? Is it going to be a closing date when after such and such a date, there's going to be no more submissions? The previous government said it was going to close, I think it was Boxing Day this year, and then the present government has said, no, it's open ended. Have we got a definitive answer, as we stand today, as to whether it's going to be open ended or there's a closing date? Thank you.
Okay, so this is relating to not so much our list of caseloads, but this is whether or not you can make an allegation about rights away based on historic evidence. So we'll call that historic claims. The answer is that still, as it currently stands, a cutoff at 2031. There there has been the announcement that in on Boxing Day, as you rightly say, that that was going to be repealed. No legislation has been tabled, to my knowledge, yet on that point. We are still expecting that our existing caseload will continue. But as it currently stands at 2031, there will be a cutoff, but for the historic cases, not for the user cases, that's a different thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your question and comments. I think councillor Christopher did raise a very good point with if people have been waiting a very long time, all of a sudden they could find themselves now put to the bottom of the pile. But it is reassuring to know that there is an appeal process that they can go to. And as councillor Granton highlighted, it seems, Andrew, you're going to be busy for a great number of years ahead. So that now concludes the discussion of the item and I would move that the committee supports the recommendation to the executive councillor for highways and transport as detailed on page 59 of the report. And I ask that our comments, as these have been captured by the scrutiny officer, be shared with the executive councillor for for his consideration. Do we have a second, Councillor King? All those in favour, please raise your hand. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That is agreed. We'll move over to agenda item number eight is the service level performance reporting against the performance framework 2025-26 as at quarter two, road safety service. This monitoring report can be found on pages 103 to 108 of the agenda pack. This report seeks to provide committee members with an update on the performance of the road safety service as at quarter two. It is asked that we consider and comment on the details contained within the report. The report will be presented by Steve Bachelor, senior manager, Lincolnshire Road Safety Partnership. Over to you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. Well, sorry, good morning. I was getting ahead of myself there. As this is just a periodic update, I won't go into too much detail. I recently presented our annual report to you. There are always slight fluctuations in the number of people killed and seriously injured when we look at any small timeframe. I'd like to give you a degree of reassurance that so far this year, we're seeing quite a significant drop in the number of fatalities on the roads. And equally, the number of people killed and seriously injured overall on the rolling 12 year, 12 month average is also showing a slight decline. So both of those are positives. I'm very happy to answer any questions that you have, either on the specifics in the report and the numbers or more generally on road safety service provision in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statement and ask questions. Councillor Robinson.
Yep, councillor Vernon.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to also begin by saying thank you for the report and for providing comparative data with the neighbouring areas. It is useful to see. I'm really very sorry to see that there has been an increase and we must remember the impact of this. Every single one of those people who has been killed or seriously injured has a family and friends. So I think it's right that there aren't specific targets for this because we are talking about people and their lives, which will be changed forever or significantly affected. And I note the comments that you've made regarding the fact that if you look at a 12 month period, then there is sort of no huge difference, so to speak. But thank you for providing the report. I think it's useful to see and note the contents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, one of the things I, one of the reasons I got on this committee was because of deaths and things on the roads. But I do find it quite bizarre that year on year, it's a similar number of people that die on the highways. And the reason I find that strange is it's not the same people. So is the problem human nature or is the problem road design? And if it's human nature, is it possible to design things better? And is that the aim to negate the human nature aspect of things where they're constantly going wrong? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I think the phrase there, human nature is is apt, of course, for as long as we have people in control of the vehicles, mistakes will be made. Now, often sometimes we focus on or highlight those deliberate acts and we think about people who are driving poorly where you might have known there'd be a negative outcome. But for the, you know, for sake of luck almost or lack thereof, any of us could be involved in a collision on any given time. The way that we try and approach road safety in Lincolnshire mirrors what is happening, I think, more widely in the UK and across the continent as well in in that we look at the safe system and we recognize that human beings will make mistakes. And when they make mistakes, if they're involved in a collision, there's a risk of death and injury. But what we say is that we will not accept that it's inevitable, that there are things that you can do to make it better and to prevent those things happening in the first place. The safe system approach looks at a number of things. It looks at the the roads themselves, the design and the maintenance. It looks at the speeds at which people are travelling on those roads. It looks at the vehicles and we've all seen the tremendous improvements that have happened maybe in the last 20, 30 years in the designs of vehicles as well. And there's more work that we can do there. Equally, we look at post crash care. How quickly do people, are they are they seen at the side of the road? How are they being treated when they get to hospital? But the biggest one for us that I think we can impact and focus on is safe road users. And so it's around education, training, the way in which they take their licenses, their way in which they behave when they're on the roads. And other things that we can do, like enforcement, for example, when people make poor choices or do things that they shouldn't, they need to know that there is a threat of something occurring afterwards. But all of those things have to come together. But ultimately, for as long as we we have, until we get to the sci fi, and I think it's probably coming ultimately, where every vehicle is, you know, driven by something other than a human, there will always be conflicts. So it's doing all that we can to prevent it happening in the first place and to reducing the severity when it does.
Thank you. Just make one more comment on that. I understand Lincolnshire highways are looking at some sort of traffic calming in neighbourhoods at the moment. I'm not quite sure what the details are on that. Do you know anything about that?
Not with that level of detail. I'm not quite sure that one might be, yeah, of course.
Thank you. Councillor Granton.
Thanks for the report, Steve. I was just wondering, when we compare other counties like Warwickshire, do we talk to Warwickshire or Northamptonshire and share strategies that might be successful in Lincolnshire?
Thank you. I think I would note that on the county comparisons, we were pretty much the worst on all of them for about two decades. So even though it's not as close to the other end as I would like to see us, we have seen improvements in recent years. So that's positive. To answer your question, yes, I think it's vital that we not only communicate with other areas and learn about the best practice and share ideas and make sure that we're not missing out on anything, but equally look at ways in which we can work together with our geographic neighbours. So we do have a number of different forums and groups that we are members of. I in the past have been the chair of our regional working groups in road safety and also represented the East and West Midlands on the national programmes as well. So it's a key part of what we do. It's absolutely vital. What you'll find is it tends to be, I guess with anything, there'll be some interesting, exciting ideas. But for the most part, people are doing slightly different variations on the same theme. And so I'm often asked, what would you do differently in terms of road safety? And my answer remains the same. I think we do the right things in Lincolnshire. I think the foreeze of enforcement, engineering, education and evaluation, ensuring it's all data led, are correct and right. For me, it's about the volume. How much can you afford to do? How much can you have a police presence on the roads? How much can you design out any particular problems? We all know, for example, that to get five star roads on the the strategic road network costs billions of pounds. And so we don't have that type of investment in Lincolnshire. So what can we do to make improvements up to the highest standard that we can? So I think I think we do the right things and we share that best practice with others and we try to learn from them as well.
Thank you. Just a question for myself. Just want a bit of reassurance about where these these are happening and is there any that are sort of hotspots regarding the same thing that's happening at the moment? Or is it just around the county sort of dotted around?
Thank you, councillor. So a degree of reassurance, again, I think, from the numbers in the report in that we say there's no commonality or theme between the last quarter and this quarter in terms of any changes or variations that we've seen. But to reassure you, every single collision where there's been some form of human injury involved is reported through to us at the Road Safety Partnership. So both the police and the county council have full access to that information. That highlights the location down to grid reference, what three words, it has the causation factors associated with the collisions, the types of vehicles, time of day, weather conditions, in essence, a wide variety of information associated with that. We periodically do a cluster run where we look at every single collision that's occurred in the last five years throughout the whole county. And we look for routes, sections of roads or junctions and specific locations where there are clusters of collisions. So we can then review those more closely and look at what actions might need to happen. We also respond proactively to councillors, to members of the public where they highlight issues and locations as well. So I'm really confident that where there is a pattern of collisions occurring, we will be aware of it. I should note the one limitation on that data. We get one and a half thousand collisions of any sort of severity of injury throughout the course of the year. So you can see when we start looking at five years, that's a lot of data already. Sometimes you'll get, I think, frustration from members of the public or your parishioners because they will say there's been damage only collisions or near misses and that we're not taking action on those. And I think that's a fair criticism. But equally, if we've got one and a half thousand that already happened last year that we need to try and deal with, there's just not enough resource to do absolutely everything. But we are aware and we do liaise with our colleagues in the police as well to get the data off their systems where people are suggesting the patterns occurring.
Yeah, sorry, just something you said about the the five year checks. How often do they get checked over the five years?
So the, we do an annual cluster run. So that's, in essence, let's say we did it today, we would then do it again the same time next year. But what then happens is it generally comes out with about four to 500 locations where there's any sort of cluster. And that could be, I don't know, two slight injuries right up to the most severe where there's a cluster of, you know, 10 fatal and serious collisions. We then start to refine that down. So about the top 100 or so, they'll do a desktop exercise of looking into the clusters and seeing if there's patterns that we can start to target. And then we go down to about 30 to 40 every year where we go out and look to design schemes to fix those problems as well. So that's that's the sort of, but that isn't the only thing we do. That's just that one annual check, which then creates an annual programme of work. We're also reviewing it constantly as we go through as well.
Yeah, I was just about to ask, do you do feel that it should be done more often? But obviously you're doing more sort of checks anyway during the year. So it's not just the only...
Yeah, I I think I think using three and five years' worth of data is a good mix, depending on what we're looking at, whether it's enforcement, engineering, because it gives us a long enough period of time where we can really see those patterns, but it's still relevant and up to date enough, you know, so that we're not looking at something 20 years ago, which, you know, could have changed dramatically. So I think that's probably the right time span. The frequency as well, I think it doesn't change that much within that time period. So you're not going to have a location that was, you know, 250 and then suddenly it jumps into the top 10 over the course of that period. So we're identifying those patterns early. Those ones that are towards the bottom, you're hoping they're going to drop off because there will be no new collisions that add on. If they do start to creep up, then we're seeing that every year and we can start to draw that in. So I feel like the timeline is appropriate.
Thank you very much. Any further speakers? Councillor Clark.
On a general question, road safety, do you actually go, still go to schools? And if you do go to schools, would it be a good idea to invite the parents to come with the children to then capture both audiences?
So we do rely upon a school accepting us into the into the school to deliver education as you'd expect. But we do work through the Stay Safe Partnership and so we get into a lot of primary and secondary schools like that. In addition, our road safety officer team delivered to just over 20,000 pupils across primary and secondary last year. So that's really positive. What we've also started to do, and I'm quite pleased with this development, is that where we have fatal or serious injuries, and it's more often than not serious, that involve pupils, we will get in contact with the school proactively. So we will ask if they have any issues or concerns that they particularly need help with. But we'll also offer to come in and do extra lessons with them so that they can then work with the pupils to head off any particular problems that might be occurring as early as possible. So to answer your question, yes, we're very much involved with the schools. We get to pretty much all of them. There are some that can't or won't have us, but that's relatively limited. We also do online resources that we can provide to the schools so they can communicate with the pupils and the parents outside as well, if appropriate. I'm not sure that we could invite the parents in to the schools, but if the school was willing and wanting to do something like that, we would certainly engage with them and and provide the staffing and the resources to do so.
Thank you. Councillor Sheard.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you very much for the valuable work that the partnership's doing. I did come along to meet people in the office at the partnership and I have to say, I was very surprised at how few people deal with such an immense amount of work. So really well done. My my question is, is there an intention to actually increase the team so that we can deal with more?
Thank you, councillor. My apologies. As you know, I was looking forward to meeting you at the partnership. I was unwell and I'm sorry you had to spend so much time with Simon. But it was, we usually keep him under wraps. Now, I I think for me, the number of people that are doing the sort of behind the scenes work, if you will, is probably appropriate. What you don't want to see in any organisation is it being top heavy and lots of people just pushing paper. I think where over time, I I mentioned in an earlier question, I would just do more of the same sorts of things. So in an ideal world, I would love to have more money to fix roads or to have them redesigned. I would love there to be more police officers on the road and for us to do more enforcement as well. In terms of education, again, I I just think in all of those four areas, having more frontline staff, be that people, the engineers who are designing or building the roads, the police that are out on the roads policing them and police staff in camera vans, et cetera, and also the education teams, then yes, we're constantly reviewing how many people we have doing each task. It has fluctuated over the 20 odd years that I've been there. But we, like everybody, are, you know, operating in challenging budget, budget restricted circumstances. So I think we get a huge amount of work over and above what we would get working in isolation if we weren't all sat co-located in the same office. So just to give one minor example, in the education team, we have both council, police, staff primarily and one fire and rescue officer, who are all working together to deliver the same programmes of works in different areas and in different target audiences, so schools or to mature drivers or people working. Now, if we were doing that in our three separate organisations, you'd need more staff and you wouldn't be having those ideas being crossed over and worked on together. So I think the way that we do it is really efficient and it works well. And I think it's a model that's seen as best practice in the UK. So to answer your question, if if we had a huge pot of money, then there's things I'd love to do, but it's probably not likely at the moment.
Well, just a big thank you and a big thank you to Simon because he really was very patient.
Thank you. Councillor Christopher.
I can absolutely concur with councillor Sheard there. Simon's great. He's a lovely guy. I actually went, I think, last week or the week before to have a chat with some of the team there. There was, there was a wonderful experience of watching somebody use PowerPoint or to to make a video on the two second rule, which I think highlighted the importance of the education aspect of what the partnership delivers on. And I think it's really important to remember that back in 1999, we had over 100 fatalities on our roads in Lincolnshire. And I think, you know, the numbers that we're dealing with now are still, you know, it would be wonderful to bring them down. But it's not until you spend time with that team and actually listen to, I suppose, their expertise on these issues that you realise that often everyone gets a, be in the these issues, that you realise that often, everyone gets a bee in the bonnet about speeding or whatever else, but actually, a lot of deaths are a result of, in our county, and it was really stark actually, learning this, is because we've got such a massive rural network, it can take ages for ambulances to get to people. And of course, it's so important to make sure that these partnerships are working together and are well-resourced. I, I, I think it must be very challenging for yourself in some ways, Steve, because of course you've got the police, the fire, the ambulance, the council, all of whom have some obligations here, trying to keep all those organisations in check, when of course their budgetary constraints and whatever else are coming from different perspectives. I think one thing that I learnt while I was there, that at the moment, the county has quite a limited volume of CCTV vans at the minute. Is there any plan to look at that and increasing those? I know, I appreciate it's probably the police that would need to find the money for that to some extent, but as a partnership, is there any plans to try and increase the volume of CCTV mobile vans that we've got? Because I was quite alarmed at the number that we have at the moment, when I heard it, so.
Thank you, councillor. I'll start by saying, to extending an offer to any of the councillors, we're always happy to host you. I understand that you are the ones that are out there dealing with people's concerns face-to-face, day in, day out. It's one of the areas that affects absolutely everybody in the county, so anything that we can do to support you. I think that the issue of speaking is a really useful one, and it's an interesting one, because what will happen is, in my experience, a member of the public will have a perception, whether that's the truth or not, really doesn't matter, because that's their fear, that's what they're experiencing. So when they make a complaint known to us, and then they get a response back that says no action's going to happen, it feels as if they've been dismissed. I think by coming to the Road Safety Partnership, you'll see, even when we're saying no, what are we doing to make sure that that is the right answer? So the seven-day surveys, when they go out, the amount of data that provides to us, the assessment of the collisions on the database, any other correspondence of concerns that have been raised, and building that up together. So at least you can then have the confidence when you go back out and say, this has been looked into, you have been listened to, even if we're not going to take some action, so that's important. With regards to the camera vans themselves, I think the best thing about our Road Safety Partnership, which we've managed to keep going now for 25 years with all of those different partners that you've highlighted, is because we operate in a model where we deliver national driver offender retraining courses, and we retain that income within it, we've been able to do significantly more than we would do if we were given budget by each of those parent organisations, so we cost very little just to be in existence. But the limitation of that, of course, is then when you do need to do things like replace a fleet of vehicles, it can take a little bit more time. I will answer your question fully. If I'm able to do it outside of that, this forum, that would be really good. But what I will say is, we are some way down the line of repairing and replacing all of the vehicles that we have, to make that fleet back up to entirely where it should be, and to looking at expanding going forwards as well. I should also note that the Chair of the Road Safety Partnership is the Police and Crime Commissioner for Lincolnshire, and he's very supportive of ensuring that we have as large and effective a team as we, as we possibly can, in terms of the types of mobile enforcement that we do as well.
Thank you. And councillor Reeve.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a statement in support of councillor Clark, this idea that parents should be invited to the school along with the pupils, because I've spoken to people who've been involved in speed monitoring before, and apparently one of the biggest corporate groups is parents on the school run, ironically, and they're the biggest complainers as well. So the more that can be done to capture that group, particularly people who drive at that time when children are on the road, I think anything should be encouraged in that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think, I think it comes down to pretty much everything we're talking about, is that people have huge concerns in their own communities, but they don't necessarily judge their own behaviour in the same way once they leave that community. So, you know, the parking issues that we face outside of schools, that speeding on in village roads, et cetera, all of those invariably end up being people who live quite locally. And I think it's often surprising when community speed watch groups are set up, in that they've decided to take some action, they're still on the roadside, and then they find they're getting abuse from their neighbour who lives down the road, and actually, they assumed it was people coming through the village. So I think you're absolutely right, both in terms of schools and parents, and local communities, and the people who live and reside within them. There's so much work that we can do to make sure those people understand the risks that they are presenting, but also try and, you know, convince them to, to just act differently. So I certainly take the point that councillor Clark and yourself, councillor Reeve, have made, in terms of working with parents in schools to try and negate some of those problems as well.
Thank you. I think that ends our discussion, Mr Chairman.
Thank you for your questions and comments, and may I thank councillor Vernon, and I'm sure every member and officer here supports you and your comments that you made earlier regarding the deaths that happen on our road and injuries. I therefore move that the committee endorses the report, that our satisfaction be recorded in relation to assurances received by officers, and I ask that our comments from today's discussion be cascaded across relevant teams for information and relevant actioning. Does anyone dissent? Thank you, that is agreed. Moving on to item nine, is highways and transport scrutiny committee work programme. This item is found on page 109 to 116 of the agenda pack. This item enables the committee to comment on the content of the works programme. Our action is to review the work programme and highlight any additional scrutiny activity which could be included for consideration in the work programme. The report is presented by Kiara Hattie-Hanu, the scrutiny officer. Over to you, Kiara.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman and members, this is a standing agenda item for this committee, which invites you to review and comment on your work programme for the coming year. The purpose is to ensure that scrutiny activity is focused on areas where it can be of greatest impact for the council and for our partners. Members are firstly asked to review and approve the current work programme, and secondly to highlight any additional issues or items of community interest that could be considered for inclusion in our future meetings. Scrutiny should be constructive, independent and focused on areas where it can be of value. While not all suggestions can be included, members are indeed encouraged to raise matters of importance to their local communities. I'm pleased to confirm that there have been no changes to the committee's work programme since the publication of its last iteration in the public domain. We are currently only one week away from our next meeting on the 15th of December, which members will receive for consideration a report on the Lincoln Yarborough Hill bank slip project, the highways quarter-two performance report, the transport performance report for quarters one and two as at quarter two, and the Transport Connect Limited annual update report. And this concludes my update to you, and I'm happy to take any questions or suggestions. But before I do that, one final note, I would like to extend my thanks to this committee, to members and officers alike, for the support I have personally received whilst I was serving as your scrutiny officer. And I would like to formally inform you that from the next meeting onwards, my colleague here, our newest member, Hannah Conklaugh, will take and assume all responsibility for this scrutiny committee. That's not to say I'm going anywhere, I'm still here, and you will be seeing me in the future, probably covering one of those meetings. So thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, Kiara, and personally thank you for all your help and assistance you've given to myself and the vice-chairman since we took over the committee. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. Councillor Robinson.
Yep, councillor Vernon.
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, I'd like to start by thanking Kiara as well, who has been of significant help to me on the occasions where I subbed as vice-chair on highways, so thank you for that. I would, however, also just like to make a point regarding the scheduling of items for the meeting. At the last meeting, we were made aware that the meeting today was supposed to be an all-day meeting. I note that that was then split into two meetings because of the amount of items to be discussed. I feel I really must just make the point that I don't consider just over 90 minutes for a meeting to be in any way excessive, and I do have concerns about the continual rescheduling of meetings, particularly at short notice. Whilst I recognise that we are where we are for next meeting, next week, I really feel that meetings should be scheduled as they are in the calendar in advance, and would just like my point to be noted, that it is an inconvenience. Members have other commitments, we have work commitments, we have caring commitments, and to have meetings changed is not really ideal, to be honest. So, thank you.
Thank you, that has been noted.
Councillor Clark.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that completely agree with what councillor Vernon just said.
Any further speakers? That's it, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. In that case, I move that we note the report and endorse the existing work programme, as detailed on pages 109 to 116, with the caveat of any additional items highlighted. The scrutiny officer presentation to be reflected in the next published iteration of the document. Does anyone dissent? In that case then, I will now conclude the business of the meeting, and thank the members of the public and press for your attendance here. I look forward to seeing those who will be here next week, and those who aren't, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That concludes our meeting, thank you so much.